If you want to mark out.
We're going down there to Saturday. Clean house.
Are we gonna burn? I mean, they just. They have a couple of. So we don't. Why is it? Seems like I'm filming. Well, yeah. Also, I don't even care. What's the lights? I like to go best. We would. Yeah. Anything to. I'm rich. As long as. Brice. That's. I got like. But yeah. You wanted. Yeah. Yeah. I would tell.
I'm not that tired already. I'm playing Kyle.
What's anybody?
That's.
It's not. Yes.
It's not.
It's not. So I do. Yeah. I'll say. Still. Now. Are you?
Go with that one.
You know.
Oh, girl. Sharon. Oh, nice. I can't. Yeah. No one. I'm really happy. For you. Just sent my mother on the train against Montana for. I don't know how you do it. I chew it. I love her. She's wonderful. But this will be good. Yes. And when we. It's not. Only for two minutes. Oh, great. Yeah. She's she's got no no time to come. For those weekends. You got eight minutes. I walked here. I use my car. Here is being all.
Get them in your.
Mercedes right out there. Break and then hit the button to start and then it's gotta to reverse. Do the thing off. Just tap it up once, drive, tap it down. Okay. Thank you.
Are you working? Three or four. You know. No, I got. I got. Um. He chose. We talked to. You know.
Yeah.
Now, we're on the other side of the line. And do what? Number nine. That's the nine.
Yeah.
Yes. The hombre. No, on the other side, we're way out.
Oh, it's.
Something. See, that's usual. So remember. Is that a baby? They're red. Play. Where's those? Yeah. You're. It was just gonna send you on the. I didn't. I don't know. We're spinning.
Right.
In passion. I love. That'll be. You go. Same. But. That's. They're. Yeah. I would come around. He might look. There. Very. Yeah. They're gonna. And I'm probably. No.
Yeah, because it's it's too big. That's. That's strange. I think they're gonna grow up there. In back.
Do you still working? So. No. That sounds like a nice. Yeah. He told me I should. Cause one of our. Then unfair. Yeah. Well, right here. That's. I think. It's. Oh, yeah. He's. Your son. He's. One. Go. Oh, yeah. Really, just take care of. You know. Yeah. Nothing worse. Was after. Yeah. Yeah. People care. I say you make. I. But that was. I always. I would have. There's one that's. Things. I didn't. Why did I try to this? Why? That's why I do that. Yeah. I was like. This. So I'm trying to find.
Uh, I was trying to find uh the meeting package. So you can uh just connect me.
My teacher. Sure. Put the speed kind of on it. There's never anything wrong. All right.
Yeah. I mean.
What they agree.
Oh, damn. I don't know. Yeah. We could hurt next.
That's what you know. When I'm being harder. It's like.
It's a lot in the water. Yeah. Well. You know. Oh, you're up. Yeah. You got. Let's have your. It's. Not better. But now. That makes me. You're fine. No. That was. Yeah. Of course. Yeah. It is. Through. You want to see that? Well. Okay. It's. Very. Some. Uh, don't.
If you walk by. Because. Those are.
Just leaving town. You don't need to.
I pray.
Oh, yeah.
They learn all the job.
That's. I have a name. I'm blind. People. Yeah. That's right. Doing. Everyone. Going. So. Like. You know. Was my. I'm. Very. About. Yeah. Yeah. You know. I'm. Something you don't. So. Very. Big. Me. Actually. I'm. I'm. Don't we have? So. It's. But I.
Oh, I think. Totally.
Yeah. Okay. Yes. So. I can. I think. So.
I know. Okay. Bad.
So. Well. It's. Not time. My. Yeah. Cause I'm reading up there to see what the notice. So you know. The. Now. Yeah.
That's. When they.
Yeah. Now. Long there. Each and all. No. No. I think it's exactly like. Just how. Play. What would you? What would you? Or. She's. There. Part. Well. Yeah. Very. Who's been doing that? Yeah. Probably. Like. Like. All I get is two. Gender. Yeah. Make it short. I heard. Yeah. 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 Uh.
Thank you.
You might. To. Know. I. But. Find that. I can send you.
Ready. Your race. We are married.
Actually. Yes. Oh, yeah. You know. We. Try. Yeah. Yeah.
Why? Just. Yeah. My. Yeah. Yeah. Right. I'm saying. I'm. Saying. So. Well, I can go. Yeah. They have. I'm. Well, I can. You know. We still. I think. So. They have. He had. Tonight.
All right. We got seven thirty. It's probably man. War. Watching. The. What do we? I think. You. One. Neither. So. We would. It would be. That's. Our. Hey, we'll call please. Mr. Daddly.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Hardy. Mr. Brier.
Here.
Mr. Thor.
Here.
The. Father.
She ran home to get her laptop.
I didn't hope to get her laptop. Uh. All day. Homeless. Okay. Started. But we got one. We got. For. We got four. We got a meeting. Okay, before we move on uh to the minutes, I'd like someone to uh read disability pledge. Uh. Mr. Diatley. Our.
In the interest of stability, I pledge most ability by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community and understanding that we may reach uh different ideas from achieving that objective.
Thank you, sir. Okay, minutes. We have a motion for over the minutes of June or May fifteen, two thousand point five.
So move the.
Second.
Moved by the at least seconded by Thor. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion so carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is the president's report. Uh, first item we've got is a request to waive the late fees. I believe that Mrs. Wong. Time to chat. Wombo has requested a waiver of the late fee that she was assessed recently on purchasing her vehicle stickers and. Well, it's just the late fees on the vehicle sticker. There is no late fee on the pet uh tags. So she had a total of bill forty dollars for the car, thirty dollars for the uh pet stickers and she would like the five dollar late fee on the vehicle sticker. Wait. Yeah. The pets. They'll. You. Really? Yeah. Ah, all right. Just that correct. Late fee on both. Animal tags and stickers. So it's a fifteen dollar. Yes. Okay. Mrs. Wombel has submitted her notice and her request stating her issues and her inability to make it to the village child to pay the vehicle sticker or the uh vehicle or the pet tags in a timely manner. She's been assessed fifteen dollar late fee and she would like that waived. We have a motion.
How motion?
Move. Moved by the wire, seconded by Thor to waive the fifteen dollar late fee of Mrs. Wombel as requested. Any further comments, questions, or discussions? There being none. Uh, this is fine. Please. Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Ms. Thomas.
Hi.
Mr. Daddly.
Hi.
Ms. McGuire.
Hi.
Currently, no. Currently, you can't handle that. So four affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so carries. All right. Uh, the next item I've got is the ComEd annual franchise report. Uh, so for your reading, there's actually, you see, one is the love shed report. That is, if you read it through ComEd's plan, should we end up having a problem with the delivery of electricity to the. Well, before the brownout start, this is what all will happen in the meantime. So. I have this. More technical than most of us care to read, but that's what it is, concerns. Uh, the second item in there is the uh actual report of serviceability reliability to the village. And you will see that uh we've done fairly good for the past year. There were very few outages uh last year. Once again, though, this report will tell us where the majority of the outages are and what causes them. If you look through the report, the number one cause is trees. Tree related outages is still our number one issue. Uh, there's also a list in there of what ComEd calls priority trees, trees which may cause a problem in the future for one reason or another. Uh, if you look through that list, you'll see sleepy owl road, Van Tassel crane, timber is the big area where the trees are and that's one of the big areas where we have problems. If you recall, if you look up there a few years ago, ComEd placed some spacers along the lines on sleepy owl road. This was done as a test for the uh Cogland area. It has performed miraculously pretty much in reducing the number of outages we had on the west side of sleepy owl due to the trees. Uh, but that's one of the things they've done. Tree trimming is yet another that has to be done in this area. So that's the annual report. Any questions on those? I'm not. Uh, I believe that includes my. Into the evening and move the portion. The one item I have provided is I'm gonna put this in the packet for all of the board members. The Metro West Council of Government has the orientation for newly elected official. I highly recommend it. It's in, it's going to be down in Geneva at the Geneva City Hall on June thirteenth. It's a morning program from nine to twelve. Uh, I've been to it several times. Uh, it's always nice to have the batteries recharged on occasion. So I do recommend uh that to each member because the village is a member of Metro West, we are not charged. It's free to the, to anybody that can prove that you're a person of uh of high rep and a member of the trustees for the board of sleepy owl. But other than that, that's all I have with them. All right. Thank you, Tom. Uh, planning and zoning, there is no report to. Turn.
President, I have no report this evening. Well, that's impending matters, but none of them ready to.
It is, sir. Uh, engineer report, Mr. Steel. Uh, recently, uh, Kane County has contacted the. In regards to their hazard mitigation plan. Um, I don't know if you know, but um the village to utilize the county for basically everything in regards to that matter. Uh, the hazard mitigation plan is basically required uh by FEMA in order to uh if there's, let's say, a federal disaster that's declared is in order to get funds is the village has to have a hazard mitigation plan and the village leans on the county in order to utilize that uh sort of piggyback onto their plan. Um, as part of their plan is they actually uh request information from the village specifically is where do we know uh hazard exists in the village? Um, where we plan on doing any kind of work, major work in the village? Um, and also who the contact information is in the village. Um, the last hazard mitigation plan was two thousand thirteen, I think. Cause that's. On. Right? Yeah. Uh, so basically is they're updating it now. Um, as part of that is they're requesting that the village participate in that matter. Um, the first was just kind of a webinar, kind of introduction saying this, the schedule of events that's happening. Um, the next webinar is June eighth, I believe. Uh, Mark Thorne is attending that. So if any more of the board wants to attend that, uh, just shoot me an email to forty that. Uh, it's just a quick little uh this, the plan, this, this schedule. Uh, the next big event would be, it's called the mitigation actions and priority prioritization workshop and that's uh both June twenty eighth and June twenty ninth. Uh, so basically as they set down, sit down with uh members of the village uh that would be involved in hazard mitigation in order to discuss uh where the plans are, who's gonna be in charge, so forth and so on. So. Um, regards to that, that's the next big thing. So if you want to get ahold of me, don't hesitate to get a call and just discuss it. Moving.
Last. Good job. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jeff. Oh, okay. After finance, Mr. Van.
Need to verify the payments on the five fifteen warrant in the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars.
So moved.
Second, the.
Moved by Thor and seconded by the athlete to ratify the warrants of May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars. Thousand dollars. Any comments, questions, or volition? Uh, all call please. Ms. Bo.
Hi.
Mr. Daddly.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Ms. McGuire.
Hi.
Oh. Five. Foreign bumps and no negative bumps, motion so carries. Thank you. Uh, next time.
Yeah. A motion for the approval of the warrants for today, June fifth, in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred.
Sorry to interrupt you, Eugene, but we left a trust Kelly off of the last show. Hi.
I'm sorry.
I trust me, Thomas.
Well said. Well said.
Thank you, Ms. Bob.
Mark started.
Thank you for showing up tonight.
You're welcome. Appreciate you.
In case you did not catch much, he's raving tomorrow for Alaska. He left here about thirty minutes.
Understood. Sorry. Sorry.
This is a pigment of our imagination.
That's good. Yeah.
Keep us on the straight. Okay, the second spread of warrants.
For uh for six five in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents.
I know.
Second.
Moved by both, seconded by Thor to approve the warrants in June fifth, two thousand twenty-three in amount of two hundred and fifty-three thousand. Fifty-three thousand. Five. Six.
One.
Uh, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred.
Six.
Six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. Any comments, questions, or discussion? There's some volitions. There being none. All call once again. Ms. Thomas. Ms. Bo.
Hi.
Ms. McGuire.
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Ms. Daddly.
Hi.
Did I miss any? But I got.
I got.
Okay, five affirmative votes, no negative votes, and motion so carries. You all.
That's it.
That's it. Thank you, Eugene. Okay, comments from the public. Have anyone signed in this evening? Negative. Negative. Okay. You. Any. On to the trustee reports. Roads and parks. Mr. Hardy is absent this evening, so Mr. Pillinger and I will work through his items. Uh, the first one, we have a quote for the Sabatino fountain. Uh, backstory on this. Mr. Pillinger.
Uh, the current one's thirty years old. The drinking mechanism part no longer works and it's completely rotted on the inside. They still, we still have a hose that get on it that works uh for the service club that they need it. Uh, so the quote we have is for six thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. And that's with installation. Um, looking for board approval on this. And depending on when I get the order in and when the installer gets the fountain, we might try to get it in before the Fourth of July, but I can't guarantee that. If we can't get in before the Fourth of July, we'll leave the current fountain in place so the service club has water for the board.
It is serviceable through the fourth.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, though, we have a motion to so approve the purchase and the installation of a new water fountain for Sabatino Park at the amount of six thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by the athlete. Okay, there any other comments, questions, or discussion?
It comes below what we had budgeted in the uh higher.
I was just. Yeah.
And it also includes a doggy. That's what I understand.
Is there any other companies that could, that we could reach us to create a little Is there any other companies that could, that we could reach out to call it a little bit lower? Is that possible?
It's already below what we anticipated. If you'd like, I mean, we can take three thou, we can norm take three bids, or by vote of the board, go with one bid.
Do we just do one bid right now?
We got one bid right now. We've looked at this through the years a couple of times, and we kicked it down the road.
Okay.
And it was running eight to ten thousand dollars. Then I re, I do remember the prior prices were higher than this, so this is much better than what we had.
Okay.
I was actually surprised at how low the installation cost was. The drinking fountain alone, I mean, they're, they're from four thousand to seven thousand dollars, whatever you want to give, but. I was expecting at least the twenty-five hundred dollar installation cost.
Yeah, that's. A plumber doesn't have to get in the vanity, he doesn't have. Yeah, they're gonna be fighting on that installation. Okay, no further comments or questions, roll call please. Ms. Bo.
Hi.
Thorn.
Hi.
Ms. McGuire.
Hi.
Ms. Thomas.
Hi.
Ms. Daddly. Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, it's so carries. You go, Mr. Kyle. Uh, the next item. Oh boy. Roofed dome. I think we had this one uh, before. This story goes on and on.
This is my fourth attempt.
This is your fourth attempt to get this thing roofed. Uh, I think it's probably about the tenth year that we've tried to get this thing roofed. Uh, I'm a little bit surprised that uh, see the quote on this. That was a little surprising. Uh, we find it here. Just some backstory on this, folks. We looked at replacing that dome. Roofed about ten years ago. And. We got a quote for about six thousand dollars. On the product. They did not meet prevailing wage, the state requirement, but yeah. We went out to state for another bid and requested that they provide with prevailing wage rates. And it went to twenty-five thousand dollars. I guess we waited ten years, it's only gone up two thousand dollars. But uh, we have gone around and around over this roof. About about ten years. Trying to get this thing below thirty thousand dollars. Uh, life expectancy, what we've got?
Passed it. Uh, what the, the salt dome was built in, I think nineteen ninety-two. And the shingles they used were like an organic shingle that they deemed defective, and there was actually a repaw on the shingle. I think I was in sixth grade. The problem with the shingle is when the sun hits it, they fold up. And if you go and look on the south side of the, the dome, it's, it's, it looks all horrible, and it's only looked like that for ten, twelve years or so. Uh, this is another one where I've had roofers come out, quote me. They don't do prevailing wage, they withdraw their bid. This year, I got this estimate in February, I had six roofers contacted, one of them came out. Because I've called them so many times for estimates every year, and they just don't, they don't want to bother with it. Uh, the other thing with this too, if you look at the quote. Uh, they want, they're gonna charge a hundred and twenty-five dollars per sheet of plywood, if they need to replace it. I'm estimating ten sheets of plywood probably need to be replaced. Um, so the, the quote is for twenty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars. I think. We have thirty thousand dollars in the budget for it. I think it's gonna take all thirty thousand dollars. It's just a, that's why.
Anything better than twenty-four hundred dollars in plywood?
Possibly. The money itself probably needs to be completely replaced.
No longer we wait for what it's gonna be.
Yeah. It's gonna get to the point where you're gonna have to do rafters and everything.
Move before that point. We have a motion to approve the. Bid of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-four cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thorn, seconded by Thomas. Any further comments, questions, or discussion on this roofing bid of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-four cents?
I just had a quick question. So I understand the pricing difficulties. You said it failed four times. Was that we've tried repairing it four times, or trying to get in that estimate?
Buying the money.
Okay.
To get it done.
We're always uh, under budget.
And we, we put this on budget, and then we go out for bids, and they come out above the budget. And so it's kept moving on down the road.
And just so, uh, I, I believe prevailing wage for a roofer in King Twenty is about forty-five, forty-six dollars. Per roofer, or per worker.
I got a question about that, cause, and I, I don't know the rules, so excuse my ignorance on this one, but I know we have a lot of roofers. That live in the community. What are the rules on volunteer?
Uh, we've gone down that road already. The issue is being, hold on, it's round and cone shaped.
Okay.
And the scaffolding alone is extremely costly uh, for someone to come up with. We tried to strike a deal with an individual two years ago.
Yeah.
Uh, we just weren't able to, to get to that point, so. It's one of those. Cone shaped things, that's not easy to rough at the end with, and as I said, the volunteers, we talked to the service club. We've talked to some of the other contractors that live in the neighborhood, and they passed on it too. So.
That's a shame.
I think we're at the rough point where we can't pick this down.
Unless somebody wants to come forward and help.
We've been there. You better make it quick, cause we're causing the boat.
Not on that.
Cause I don't want to be having.
It's a water slide, not a roof.
The problem we have is we lose roof, we're not able to qualify for the state bids on salt.
Okay.
That was the other issue.
Yeah.
That's why we built the building was. State requirements, if you participate in the state bid, you gotta put salt on a particular pad, in contained. So, and being as close to a flood plain as we are with that area, they watch us pretty closely on that. No other questions or comments on this uh, roofing quote? We'll have a roll call, please. Mr. Daddly.
Hi.
Ms. Thomas.
Hi.
Ms. McGuire.
Hi.
Ms. Thorn.
Hi.
Ms. Bo.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, and motion so carries. Okay, the next item we've got, Kyle, Jill Peak and Hazel Swale Work.
Yeah, so this is another one that uh, Hazel Court, we've, we've kind of kicked it down the road as far as our drainage plans. Uh, Jeff and I had gone through the village and looked at drainage, and this is an issue of concern. Jill Peak is also another one that was scheduled to be done last year on the street program, but because of the strike. It got pushed off. Uh, and so we, we're talking, we decided to go through. Uh, my contractor, because if we go through Jeff's, when we do the state, or the bid for the roads, it's, it's double the cost. Uh, the first one would be uh, the swale at twelve oh eight, Jill Peak Drive, twelve eight, twelve ten. I believe there's a, a picture of it. On, in your packets. Uh, in, the total for both of them is four thousand forty-five dollars. Divided by two, it's two thousand dollars for soil work for each uh, property.
Okay, we have a motion to solve.
So moved.
Second, Deattly.
Moved by McGuire, seconded by Deattly to approve the. Swale work from ponds in the amount of four thousand twenty-five dollars. Forty-five, four thousand forty-five dollars for Hazel Court and Jill Peak. Any more comments, questions, or discussion? Being none, roll call please. Ms. Daddly.
Hi.
Ms. Bo.
Hi.
Ms. Thomas.
Hi.
Ms. Thorn.
Hi.
Ms. McGuire.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, and motion so carries. You all. Okay, anything else, Mr. Killen?
Uh, street signs have been ordered. Don't know how long it's gonna take, cause they have to send them off, the post off to get powder color black. Soon as they come in, we'll start putting them up.
Yeah, fair enough. Any uh, pipes on your app for?
I have interviews tomorrow.
All right, uh, finance, Mr. Thor.
A couple of things, I'll defer to uh, Mr. Ben.
Our ancillary insurance renewal is up on July first. Um, we use Assured Partners, and they go out and look for the best deals for us. Uh, currently, we have Humana provision and the standard for everything else. The standard wanted to increase the dental coverage by, I think it was eight percent, nine percent, which would have been eight hundred and eighty dollars. Um, however, they offered to us that if we go with them with the vision. They would maintain the dental, so the dental would not increase. However, their vision program is three hundred and seventy-six thousand more expensive than Humana. So we would still have a net savings of five hundred and four dollars by switching from Humana to uh, the standard. Um, the good thing is, is that this is only for a year, and um, every year we look at all the rates, so we're not locked into this forever. So they can't play the game of, you know, we're gonna give you this guy this year, and then stick it to you next year, cause we don't always go back to uh, Humana. So we would need a motion then, uh, to, to renew the um, ancillary. Insurance at the uh, port of rates.
So moved.
Bo, second.
Moved by Thorn, seconded by Bo to approve the ancillary insurance renewal rates as presented. Further comments, questions, or discussion? Okay, roll call please. Ms. McGuire.
Hi.
Mr. Daddly.
Hi.
Ms. Thomas.
Hi.
Ms. Bo.
Hi.
Mr. Thorn.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, and motion so carries.
Next item, second item. A lifetime ago, uh, Representative Metz came through the uh, village, and she toured it with uh, the President Pickett. And uh, some of the things that were pointed out were the flooding issues that we have, the roadwork, and then being able to try to maintain that. And, you know, we also talked about water, so there were several issues we had talked to her about. Well, she came back with uh, wanting to give the village a grant for two hundred thousand dollars. And we kept asking, when can we get the money? And it was, you know, it was kind of like ping pong. Well, you gotta talk to these people. No, you gotta talk to these people. Well, finally, after tracking this down enough, um, really, the state department of. Uh, the CEO contacted us and says that they're ready to give us the money. So I uh, filled out, you know, preliminary paperwork, had them take a look at all fifty-one pages of it. And um, it says it looks good, so what we need is approval to sign. The uh, the paperwork to get it to them, to get the money. We are limited by the grant, that we can only do. Uh, flood mitigation and road repairs. Um, you know, the situation that we're kind of in now is where we have to go, because we do not have the equipment. We have to hire out to improve the swales. In talking to um, Kyle, he said that he would be able to maintain the swales. At a lot cheaper cost than going outside, if we had a mini excavator and a jutter. And so instead of having a one-time thing where we send it out to. Like, um, something like that, if we buy this mini excavator, um, and this jitter, um, Kyle can maintain it for the most twenty years. Um, so about half of the, the cost of, of the grant would be towards those items. So um, that was what was reflected in the paperwork. So again, what we need is a motion to allow Mr. Pickett and myself to sign this paperwork to. Press us forward.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thorn, seconded by Thomas to authorize the village president to sign the DECO paperwork for the two hundred thousand dollar grant.
Along with me.
Along with the Mr. Van. And I, authorizing Mr. Van and Mr. Pickett to sign the DECO grant. Uh, this is good news. Two hundred thousand dollars, you told us, for almost fourteen months ago.
Yeah.
That we could have, let's talk. Without any further questions, comments, discussion, can we go to a roll call? Mr. Daddly.
Hi.
Ms. Thomas.
Hi.
Ms. Bo.
Hi.
Ms. Thorn.
Hi.
Ms. McGuire.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, and motion so carries. Thank you all.
That's all I have.
Anything else? That's it?
That's it.
All right. Okay, water and sewer. Ms. Bo.
Well, I'm so grateful that my first month in, there's special situations to handle. Um, we had a burst pipe at one residence and a running water in another residence that have resulted in two outstanding water bills. Uh, one in the re, in the realm of forty-five hundred dollars, the other was about thirteen hundred. Uh, this is just from an in, individual incident. It's a lot of water rushing out. The difficulty they were running into with it is that it was two, in both circumstances. It was two older individuals. There are some. Awareness issues that were going on, so they weren't very aware what was going on on their property, and their younger. Housemates were not around to notice what was going on in the basement, somewhere that they didn't go frequently. They're on fixed incomes, so I've been speaking with the family to work out a solution. Um, we've come up with some payment plans to get these paid off. And I know that prior, I've been speaking with Joe Nemec, prior practice is that we could waive the late fees, provided there was a. A payment plan set up, and that they maintained current monthly bill payments. I'm seeking also an additional request, and that's that we waive the water usage fee, which is something we don't do. Um, I'm asking it as a one-time exception from the board for these two individuals. One is definitely moving out of town, once they get everything squared away. So they'll be moving out of the home into someplace that is a little bit better managed, and the other is also in discussions of that, so I. Like to help ease their burden as they're trying to make this transition and see what we can do to just, we wouldn't, essentially, we would just not be making the. The water markup fee off of these expenses that we pay to Elgin to process it, so we'd be breaking even on their water exposure. Um, so for those, for the specifics, uh, it's. Nine forty Glen Oaks, in which they had the. They have an outstanding bill of four thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. That was in one incident, so I would like to. Get approval to waive the late fees, which would be four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. And that's each month, that, that late fee will be waived, cause it's ten percent of the bill. So long as they maintain their regular payments, and the payment plan for them, depending on the outcome of tonight, will be paid off within twelve months. We're looking between six to twelve months, but she wanted to find out what the amount would be. And then for forty-four Katrina Lane, their amount, their bill amounted to. Six hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty cents. And so their late fees, which is ten percent, is sixty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. And then the additional ask I'm asking the board is the water usage fee, which is two hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents, and that's based on the gallon used per residence.
That's two hundred and eighty-four per?
Two hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents.
That's the differential between what we pay Elgin and what we charge our residents. On the total bill. It, there, we don't have a very high market.
Okay. Well, what I'm questioning is that two hundred and eighty-two dollar figure you quoted, is that for both of them, or is that just for the last one?
Uh, that's for the last one, that's for forty-four Katrina Lane. Their bill.
Eighty-two.
And I'm sorry, I misspoke. Their bill was actually separated onto two, two monthly bills, so it was actually about thirteen hundred dollars. Uh, for that, for their water. It wasn't a pipe break, but it was a water running.
And then the other one, nine forty?
Nine forty Glen Oaks. The water usage fee is six hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Okay, so for them, let's go back to nine forty. They've got an outstanding bill of four five hundred dollars and change. And we wanted to reduce that by another six hundred and ninety-two dollars?
Yes. The late fees have not been applied. We've, we've held those for the moment.
Okay. And then for forty-four Katrina, they're thirteen hundred plus. You're asking for a waiver of two hundred and eighty-two dollars and change for the. Markup plus the late fee.
Yes, and on that one, of the thirteen hundred dollars, they've already paid off seven hundred and eighty-seven, I believe. So, yeah, and they, they said that they can commit to a fifty dollar payment plan each month in addition to their current monthly bill. That's where we stand on that, and I would. Um, what I'd like to do is because they're the same circumstances, I feel that if we're going to issue an exception, it should be to both. Um, I'd like to do the vote as a parcel for both properties, but we'll do it just by the late fees, so I have to get approval for that, and then I'll. Do a second, I'd like to ask for a second motion for the water usage fees. What we have to do on those individuals. Okay.
You can call the motion as you like.
Then, uh, I'd like to move to waive and freeze the late water charges for nine forty Glen Oaks. In the amount of four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents, provided they adhere to the payment plan. As well as the uh, late water charges for forty-four Katrina Lane, in the amount of sixty-eight dollars and sixteen cents, also, so long as they adhere to the payment plan.
Second.
Moved by Bo, seconded by Thorn to waive the late fees for nine forty uh, Glen Oaks and forty-four Katrina. Uh, as long as they maintain payment of their current bills. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? Being none, roll call. Mr. Daddly.
Hi.
Ms. Bo.
Hi.
Ms. Thomas.
Hi.
Mr. Thorn.
Hi.
Ms. McGuire.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, and motion so carries.
And then, for, for the second motion, I'd like to request, and I'd like to stipulate it's a one-time exception with the new board. Uh, that we. In this case, we waive the water usage fee for nine forty Glen Oaks, in the amount of six hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-five cents. And the water usage fee for forty-four Katrina Lane, in the amount of two hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. Again, with the stipulation for both that they adhere to the payment plan and pay their current monthly bill.
Moved and.
Second.
Moved by Bo, seconded by Thorn. Waive the water usage fee for nine forty and uh, Glen Oak and forty-four Katrina. Uh, respectively, amounts quoted. Okay, any comments, questions, or discussion on this one? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Daddly.
Hi.
Ms. Thomas.
Hi.
Ms. McGuire.
No.
Ms. Thorn.
Hi.
Ms. Bo.
Hi.
Four affirmative votes, no negative votes, and motion so carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
And that's all for the water.
That's it for water? What about sewage?
Thankfully, there have been no issues with sewage.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, police and public safety, Mr. Deattly.
Yes, some good news to report. Um, the chief has found us a new squad car. Um, I know some people are probably saying, what's that? You know, we, the chief has been looking for, we approved this. I don't know what, you know, a couple of years ago, a year ago. And because of Ford and the pandemic, and then canceling all orders, it was, sorry, you're not getting this card. The chief through his efforts, and I will say, extensive efforts, are on the phone and calling people, and so it is. He has found with the new squad car, um, so I'm going to make the motion then. Uh, that we approve the purchase of a new squad car in the amount of forty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars. This is a substantial savings from where we were when this was first approved. It was at about fifty-three thousand. Uh, now we do have some changeover to do with equipment that has to be moved from the one squad car to the other, but it will still be as a standard savings. Um, to the village.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the new squad, purchase of a new squad car at the price of forty-one thousand.
Three fifty-five.
Three hundred and fifty dollars. Forty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-five even, I'm sensing it all. We have a second? Moved by Deattly, seconded by Thomas to approve the purchase of a new squad car. Forty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Being none, roll call please. Ms. Bo.
Hi.
Ms. Thorn.
Hi.
Ms. McGuire.
Hi.
Ms. Thomas.
Hi.
Mr. Daddly.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, and motion so carries.
Thank you all. Um, a couple of other things, just want to thank everyone who came out to the town hall meeting that happened that. Um, on parking regulations. Um, he is taking all that information into account and working on some additional things, so there will be more uh, to come on that. Um, but appreciate everybody coming out and all the comments that were shared. Um, so that's that being forward as well. Um, little side note, I. Um, little side note, I did attend the Randall Over Ninety meeting. Uh, President Pickett was there as well, um, to look at their plans, they are promoting five plans for the new interchange of Randall Over Ninety, which will affect Sneaky Hollow coming down Randall Road. Um, they will not. At this point, they will probably pick a plan a year from now, is what they're saying. Um, and after that, funding, who knows, then that will happen. Um, but the one big thing with a lot of the residents along Randall is sound mitigation, uh, be it walls, be it whatever it is. Um, a lot of the plans aren't really big on that right now, so, uh, more to come on that. Please go on and check out the Randall Overnight website, all the plans are on there. Um, I will continue to monitor that as well, and if you have any questions or want to talk about it, just let me know.
One point, uh, Mr. Dattley, that they did make with me, if there is any expansion of the road, it will be to the west.
Yes.
It will not be to the east.
It will not be to the east.
But they're not ruling out any. Expansion.
Right.
They did say, if they do do it, it will be to the west and not to.
Right. Mm-hmm, yeah. And that's all I have today.
All right, thank you, Steve. Uh, building environment, Mr. McGuire.
I'll report, Steve.
Thanks, Jennifer. Uh, building and zoning, Ms. Thomas.
Um, the only thing I have is that I've been working with, uh, Barb Dever. On the twelve oh eight Timber Drive, that we met with, uh, the line Friday. And, uh, we're making a little progress, so. Keeping.
Okay. All right, thank you, Guy. All business, any old business coming for the board? No business, or any new business coming for the board?
I move with your adjournment.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all the papers, if I by saying I.
Aye.
All right.
All, we are adjourned.